And now, we are going to have a discussion and presentation with Matt Shipley on the master facilities plan. This is something we have been waiting to see for months and months and months.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. We are excited to present the preliminary results of our facility assessment and the overview of our draft master facility plan this evening. Tonight's presentation is in line with Board Policies 4150 and 4160, as well as Strategic Plan Priority Number Four. Presenting with me tonight from White and Company is Rick Dohar, Wendy Watts, and Steve Shearer. I don't think we're going to need to go to the bullpen tonight, but we do have a couple other members of their team with us as well, as well as our Director of Building Operations, John Robinson, who's fresh off a full day of dealing with building floods and leaking pipes. So, we're excited to have him here as well. When we started talking about this process really well over a year ago, we really saw this as the final piece of many of our long-term strategic initiatives. This was also a chance to reframe how we see our facilities, to not just see them as a cost center, but to see them as really an opportunity for value add, an opportunity to accelerate and supplement the learning that's already going into our classrooms. Also a recognition that if there's the opportunity for it to accelerate, there's also a chance for it to inhibit learning if not done properly. When we look at the strategic initiatives that we built on, starting with the boundary and enrollment work in the fall of '21, our strategic plan and our equity plan which followed thereafter, our goal was to build on these strategic initiatives, not to revise or modify the work, but again, to really enhance it. I know that may sound a little, you know, just a little opaque. So, I just want to provide some examples of some of the work that we saw on these specific plans or projects that then we were able to incorporate into the work that you'll see this evening. Again, as mentioned, the first project was our enrollment and boundary analysis, and we left that in the winter of, in the fall of 2021, winter of 2022. We knew we still had capacity challenges at certain facilities. We, as part of the boundary analysis, we respected communities' desires to solve these issues without creating long commutes, without breaking up neighborhoods, and without negatively impacting some of the facilities that maybe did have capacity on the south side. So, I think you'll see in today's analysis some creative solutions that are going to start addressing some of those capacity challenges in several buildings. You know, when I think about the strategic plan, the one thing that always sticks out to me personally is the voice that we had of the students at the table and their desire to not just focus on academics and test scores, but to really focus on the whole student. I think we've seen that now over the past year or two with our focus on SEL and social-emotional learning issues, the mental health clinics Dr. Tally mentioned earlier. I think you're going to see that tonight as well, as we really present a holistic approach to our facilities, start looking at how we can support that whole student better in our facilities. And then finally, the equity plan. Again, looking at how we can incorporate the equity plan into this building plan. And we knew going into this project, I think everybody knows, we had some buildings that were a little older and maybe a little rough around the edges compared to some of the others. And so, we knew from an infrastructure perspective, we had an additional investment to make in a few facilities. I think what White's team did a really good job at was explaining to us and maybe working closely with the building leaders to really understand how those buildings are also holding us back in some of the learning environments and learning improvements we want to make as well. So, again, I think you'll see a focus not just on the infrastructure needs of some of those specific facilities, but the need to modernize learning environments as well. And then finally, I do think about special education, how we support students with diverse needs as well. And again, I think you'll see tonight a real focus on those spaces with the goal not just to retrofit a traditional classroom for those students, but to really serve their specific needs at the design level. So, with that, just a quick overview of tonight's evening, I'm going to turn it over to the White and Company team, and they're really going to talk about their assessment process, as well as the results of their assessment, and then start presenting our draft facility plan to you. After that, I'll kind of conclude with just some comments about some of the work we've already started to do on this plan, as well as the next steps to really ensure a successful adoption.
Okay, so I'm going to take us all back in time a little bit. We were brought on, White was brought on a little over a year ago.
It is green.
Talk louder. How's that? Closer, 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 closer. All right. So, in January, soon after we were hired, we just started up the process, a little bit of a getting to know you, and we'll get into some of the details of that, followed by February through June, walking through and really performing the assessments on all of your buildings. And so, that was done by fellow associates from White and Company, as well as Alara Engineering, and Answer Advisory was taking a look at several different components that we'll go through. Since summer started right through now, we've been really focusing on the planning efforts, and Steve will share many of those plans with you. Okay, so to start up, with the startup in January, first is just taking a look at some general information, and I know you've seen most of these figures before. Very diverse grouping of buildings, although a lot of similarities, as there are prototypical buildings, but just the sheer amount of square footage that you have. One new factor to keep in mind is that the total investment you have in your real estate in today's current dollars is about $3.5 billion, and I think that's just an important figure as we move forward and think about ways of protecting that investment. Another metric that we looked at to evaluate your buildings is the age. So, here we have listed all of your buildings grouped together by feeder zones. Wabansy on top in green, Matea feeder zone yellow in the middle, and Niqua feeder zones at the bottom in blue. And we're showing when the initial building was built, as well as any additions that they had. And the important factor to consider here is the buildings that are shown in that gray bar, which is 1985 through 2005. Eighty percent of your buildings were built during that time for an average age of 30 years across the district. So, just keeping in mind that a bulk of things were built at the same time, so not surprisingly, there's going to be a lot of repairs coming due at the same time. Another metric, yet again, is looking at square footage per child. Across all of your elementary schools, you're pretty close on target. 130 square feet per student is what we like to see in today's day and age if you were building brand-new. Obviously, your buildings aren't all brand-new, and you have some outliers that are a little bit larger and some that fall short a little bit. But in general, pretty good news there. Versus the middle schools, more square footage needed at the middle school level for more specialty programs. And in general, the middle schools do fall short of a goal square footage, although not horrible, but we have some recommendations for that. And then at the high school level, yet again, furthermore, square footage, think athletics, auditorium, some really big spaces that now start to get introduced. And while Matea and Niqua are below where we'd like for them to be, you see that Wabansy is right there or even above. And don't be fooled to think that that means that Wabansy's in great shape. It's really about that building has suffered from addition after addition, and a lot of square footage that ends up going towards circulation space, which isn't necessarily educational space. So, larger, but not necessarily the better of the three. Okay, so now, moving on, we got our bare metrics, stepping into step number two, which is the assessment and alignment that happened throughout the spring. So, just to back up a little bit, looking at what is a facility master plan. And a facility master plan is many things, but essentially, it's taking a look at the building's needs and balancing that with student needs, evaluating things on a building-by-building basis, bringing a lot of different stakeholders to the table, and we'll talk about that, to be sure that the priorities are being heard from multiple sources, as well as looking at and forecasting what the future needs are and prioritizing those, and putting a dollar cost to that as well. So, step number one in our facility master plan was the assessment of the physical conditions, and this is a multi-tiered study that was done with Answer Advisory, and they took a look at, I'm sorry, this was Alara Engineering, taking a look at the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection systems with multiple different components there, as well as on the architectural, both the outside of your buildings, the campus themselves, the exterior of the building, the interior, including loose items like furniture and equipment. And then further with the physical assessment is the security side. And the security side was also done by Answer Advisory, and they take a deep look into three different components of security between operational analysis, how the buildings function, procedures you have in place, physical security, and then planning for resiliency. With the educational alignment, this is yet another lens of looking at your buildings, and what this really comes down to, how well does your physical space support the education that you're trying to deliver, and many different factors in that. And through the educational alignment, there's a few things that came to surface that you'll see as some common themes as we talk about facility improvements. And first and foremost, beyond anything, is how can we improve the classroom? How can we have spaces that are more flexible, more efficient, without doing a lot of construction? Improvements that can be made in place. Then, creating some personalized learning spaces, and that goes from elementary through middle to high school. Lots of different services are provided to students now, and it's those types of areas where that happens best. Improvements to special ed, their core learning spaces, as well as just resource areas too. And then the alignment for some of your special programs. So, at the younger grades, we're talking about library maker spaces. Middle school, it's all of your encore programs, including your family and consumer science and instructional education. And at the high school level, yet again, those complementary programs, whether it's fine arts or the family consumer science TEE programs. And then overriding all of this is taking a look at wellness, and how can we support your students and staff in terms of wellness. And that goes beyond just physical fitness and food, down to providing appropriate spaces for meeting and those resource areas. So then, as you recall, because many of you were there, the community engagement sessions that happened in the early fall, those touchpoints with each of your feeder districts that we had twice. There were several things that we heard over and over again that were elements for an effective learning environment. First and foremost, beyond anything, indoor air quality improvements. So, all of those improvements to the mechanical systems, better air quality, whether it be temperature, humidity, pollutants, et cetera, updating technology in learning areas, student comfort, and that can speak to a lot of different things, which includes ergonomics of furniture movement throughout the day, as well as overlapping a little bit with the idea of temperature and indoor air quality. Abundant daylighting is something that we heard consistently, some more than others, as well as improvements to create modern learning environments. And then, of course, safety and just feeling safe as well. Safe place vibe extends beyond just physical security. And these are the actual results from those three different sessions, or I'm sorry, six sessions, but grouping of results from the different feeder zones. And so, we talked about those top six things, but I just wanted to point out, safety and security, that that occurred in different locations. But another thing that came up is sustainability, and that certainly was a topic that arose at other conversations. And we just wanted to make the point of saying, make no mistake, what you are doing by preserving your current buildings is the most sustainable thing as a district that you can do. But as we look at future proposed projects, whether it be improvements or some small additions, everything will be done under the lens of sustainability, and we'll be exploring lots of different ways that that can manifest itself. All right. One other aspect, another point of input, was many, many, many meetings. We didn't quantify the number of hours, but I can guarantee it was in hundreds or thousands, and reaching out to everyone, or reaching out to every building and multiple different people having opportunities to share input. So, the first thing that circled at the top was tours of peer school districts that we took your high school team, middle school team, and elementary teams to, to sort of see in place what is possible with renovations, how you can breathe new life into an older facility. And I think those were some good inspiring days of practical solutions. Then, departmental meetings at the district level were had with a variety of different departments, focus group workshops where we worked through some of these solutions. Each building, we met with your leadership, so principal, sometimes they would involve others as well, and touring around your building. And that was done both at the architectural end for White and Company, with the engineers for Alara, security with Answer, and the educational alignment and facility assessment with Alara. So, the point here is there was multiple teams that toured each of your buildings multiple times. And kicking the whole thing off early on were some surveys that we sent out to all of your staff. So, certainly, all of your staff members have had a chance to have a voice at one point or another in this process.
Okay, so now, we want to spend some time recapping the last part of the process, and that's really the planning process. And that's where we spent the most recent months, just kind of putting everything together and coming up with an individual planning approach for each of your buildings. And even though we did look at an approach for each of your buildings, there were some overarching considerations that we applied to each school. Number one, you'll see safety and security on the top of a lot of lists tonight. That's something we've looked at in terms of how could we improve on the safety and security you already have in place and make the buildings more secure and safe than they already are. Infrastructure, you've already heard, is a big part of this master plan. So, in what ways can we continue to invest in or protect the investment you have in these buildings by ensuring the right infrastructure's in place that would allow these buildings to serve you for the next 20, 30, 40-plus years? And with that comes the opportunity to rethink about the types of infrastructure that's being put in place, the types of systems, how efficient they are, how much energy do they use, what types of energy they might use and where it comes from, the types of materials we're putting in your building, how healthy they are. So, good chance to really create that sustainable future for the district for years to come regarding your facilities. We touched on modernizing the learning environments, and we're going to take a deeper dive into that in a little bit, but also just implementing consistency across the district. This is a comprehensive master plan. We've looked at every building. So, with that comes a chance to maybe establish a consistency level that you haven't seen in a while, or maybe achieve some parity that hasn't been there before across your different campuses. And then with all the buildings you have, there's a lot to manage. Maybe there's ways we can improve on just the operational efficiency as well. So, when it comes to the targeted improvements of modernizing learning, there were some key opportunities that we saw across the board. This is from elementary school all the way to high school. And even though the same considerations apply to all the schools, they just might manifest themselves differently depending on the age of the students or the different teaching and learning that's happening as the students get older. Again, we have safety and security on top of this list. We actually think it is a learning improvement. You know, if your students don't feel safe, their ability to learn is inhibited. So, that's actually a similar conversation across all your schools. I would just say, as the buildings get bigger, the conversation on how security gets layered in those buildings adjusts accordingly too. But lots of opportunities for personalized learning, and I think specifically at the elementary schools, that's really about how do we accommodate all the different scales of teaching and learning that are happening. When your elementary schools were first planned, it was largely about classrooms, and understandably so. You needed this number of students, you needed this number of classrooms. There was a handful of offices planned in these buildings, and predominantly, one room that might have been allocated for some type of special education. That's like Room 107 that shows up in a lot of the elementary schools. But really, what we see now is all these different modes of learning, whether it be small group work for reading improvement or intervention, different group sizes for ELL instruction. We see fourth and fifth graders collaborating more outside the classroom, different group sizes for advanced learning. So, part of the master plan targets how we could not only right-size all those learning spaces, but get the right balance of learning spaces within schools, so all that could happen more effectively. Efficient instructional areas across the board, that's going to be about your classrooms. When we can, we're using the classrooms that you have, but we're accounting for things like furniture, technology in the room, more efficient storage. And those three things could really go a long way to transform in your classroom, especially if you couple it with some new lighting and a fresh coat of paint. It's a good way to really transform those spaces that you already have as opposed to, again, rebuilding classrooms. But there are some targeted, you know, grade level classrooms that are part of this master plan, namely at the elementary level kindergarten. So, these elementary schools were planned with a half-day program. We're now at a full-day program. So, achieving some consistency at the kindergarten level is part of the master plan. And then, we've already mentioned purposeful and inclusive special ed environment. And this conversation is twofold. You know, one is that there are self-contained schools, and when they do, they have very specific space needs that might differ from a traditional classroom. Unique storage needs, different personal needs for students when it comes to restrooms and changing areas, more need for one-on-one instruction within the classroom. So, part of the master plan improvements targets where those programs exist, how can we make those spaces more functional. And then the other side of that are just resource spaces for special ed. So, that one room that these buildings were originally planned for, it's more like two, three, sometimes four of those spaces are needed at the school. And that's just the broadening of the net that we've seen in terms of students who need those types of spaces. Specialist spaces, that's a big part of the master plan, because if you think about the different activities that are happening in those spaces, that's when students are being creative, they're being innovative, they're communicating, they're working in groups, and that really speaks to a lot of the characteristics of your portrait of a graduate. So, at the elementary level, that's art and that's music, but we're starting to see that become more STEM maker activities in the library. So, in what ways can we create more dedicated space for that, those skill sets to continue to flourish at the elementary level? And this idea of wellness at the elementary level, it's not just physical wellness, but it's really the whole student wellness. So, this could be all sorts of things from the indoor air quality that the students are breathing, to how comfortable they are, to making sure that there's sensory and calming spaces in the building so that they're not comfortable, they can regulate themselves. Food service might be a part of this, where they eat and how the food is presented. It could go a long way in terms of presenting this or promoting this idea of healthy eating and just overall culture of health and wellness. And these characteristics continue on to the middle school. Some of the conversations change, namely under personalized learning, that's when we're starting to look for more collaborative spaces for students. They're older students, they're engaging in more self-guided group work, so more spaces we could provide for student collaboration. Some middle schools were planned with that in mind. There's some collaborative den areas outside of the new four prototype buildings. Other schools have a lot of classrooms and hallways and very little space in between to collaborate. So, part of this master plan is, you know, creating that same opportunity and space at all middle schools for student collaboration. And here, we're also thinking about academic resource space for students at the middle school. Instructional areas, of course, it's always about the classrooms. But here, at the middle school level, we're also thinking about teacher workspace, shared outside the classroom, because the more we can get that right, that frees up space in the classroom so that they're more effective for teaching and learning. And then specialist spaces, what's changing there is just this is your types of spaces that evolved quite a bit. If you think about elementary music and art to some of the TE spaces at high school, there's a lot of change. So, at the middle school level, we're seeing more just comprehensive spaces for family and consumer sciences, applied tech, and in what ways can we make those spaces adaptable so as interest and career pathways change, the spaces can adapt to. And then wellness, what's unique with the middle schools is we're starting to see dedicated spaces for fitness. So, when we think about renovations and improvement, in what ways can we continue to promote those types of spaces and make them commonplace in the building as well? And then, these ideas continue on to the high school. I might just highlight a few changes. Here, at the high school level, more independent learning. So, when we think about personalized learning, we're thinking about a mix of spaces for blended learning. And then, another specific thing to high schools is when we think about the instructional areas, this is when we're really thinking about those teacher department offices, because when we could share those and get those right in the buildings, it not only fosters cross-collaboration among teachers, but it makes the classrooms all the more utilized and optimized as well. And then the specialist spaces, now these programs are getting all the more robust, and in what ways can we consolidate those in the building so all those different types of spaces could share resources? So, then, that's when we started taking all those considerations and opportunities and applying them to the individual building plans. So, here, you see the elementary school footprints or floor plans that feed into Wabansy Valley. First and foremost, every school as part of the master plan is going to be targeted for some level of improvement. So, all the areas you see in gray at each of these schools will receive some level of either infrastructure upgrades or modernization. Every school is going to get security upgrades, and a big architectural part of that is getting that front entrance vestibule the way we want it in an approved way for security. Sometimes, that means, depending on the space available, that's a renovation of the existing vestibule and main office. Sometimes, certain schools might need more space in the building. That might mean a vestibule gets added on to the front. Other schools that have higher program needs, it might mean that a vestibule and some office space gets added to the front. But that's just an example of coming to the same solution, but solving the problem in different ways because of the program needs of a building or the capacity of a building. Same logic applies to the Matea Valley schools. Here, I would note that the master plan does plan for a classroom addition at Young Elementary School. It's one of the northern elementary schools that has a self-contained program. So, that addition is not only to accommodate the capacity needs at that specific school, but also just build in some additional flexibility for the district if it has more elementary capacity on the north side of the district. And then, same level of renovation and security upgrades being done at the Niqua Valley schools. And then, moving on to middle schools, same thing here. Every school is targeted with some level of renovation and improvement. But here, you'll see a substantial amount of expansion at Hill and Gregory. Hill and Gregory are your two oldest middle schools. They're the ones most challenged with capacity and size. They come with them, you know, a certain amount of infrastructure needs. So, those are two that fall under the category of certain schools that just need a certain level of work to come up to par with the rest of the middle schools. So, we've been using the term comprehensive. Those are comprehensive renovations and work being done at Hill and Gregory. And then, moving on to the high schools. So, here, we color-coded them a little bit differently, just because these are more comprehensive buildings. But at a very high level, we're just giving you a different sense of the levels of renovation being targeted at the buildings. So, the areas in red are more substantial renovations where we're making some major reorganization to the building. I'm going to call it the areas in orange based off of that screen right there, but orange or yellow are more medium level. And then, the lighter shade is just lighter renovations, which might include just new finishes. And really, these upgrades and improvements are really centered around the heart of the school, where the common areas of the building are, the cafeteria, the library, just a way of improving the efficiency of the school, the circulation through the school. And then, around that sort of center, heart of the school, organizing classrooms and teaching spaces by department, and then making sure there's adequate shared department offices also distributed throughout the school, and then also adequate spaces for the team house support spaces too. So, really centering that or concentrating on that middle portion of the school, it's where most of the students would be impacted, and then just a better organization to the school, and maybe even getting some daylight in places that currently don't have any daylight. school and maybe even getting some daylight in places that currently don't have any daylight. A little bit more targeted improvements at Matea Valley. So here the areas of gray are allocated for some level of infrastructure upgrades. So even though Matea is one of your newest schools, it's approaching that 20-plus year mark where a lot of infrastructure comes due. But two of the major things we heard at Matea is just better wayfinding and circulation through the building and then more collaborative spaces for students. So here we also center really that heart of the building as a way to better improve the circulation for students to get from one side to the other, and then in doing so, create more tutoring spaces, more small group rooms, more collaborative spaces, and then focus on a reimagined library that will also provide more of that collaboration spaces for students. And then lastly, Niqua Valley, same kind of color coding applies here. Here is, we're modernizing certain needs within the building, but a big part of this story is getting all your high school students within three buildings. So with that, just comes some practical needs as freshmen move over, you need more dining space, you need, you need more administrative space. So this really focuses on consolidating all the staff and teacher spaces into a central addition in front of, in front of the building. And then what that does, it pulls out all your staff spaces from the academic wing and then frees up those classrooms for better utilization and more students. This is one area that we're still studying, the amount of expansion and the capacity of the classrooms too, just to make sure that we have that balance of how much extra space or additional space we need to accommodate the freshman class moving over.
So I'd like to reiterate a couple of things that have been said so far tonight. There have been hundreds of points of contact with people from around the district. Students, community members that have gone into looking at how your schools work today and how they best need to work in the future. From a facility standpoint, hundreds of hours, and we've been in every school with experts of different expertise to understand exactly how they're operating today and what needs to be done. The fact that most of your schools were built, as Wendy pointed out, between 1985 and 2000 and 2010. Some of them were plans that were replicated and originally designed in 1980 or before. And the things you're doing in your schools today educationally are much different than they were when those schools were designed, which is what's causing some of the change to happen. But all of those changes stem from the work that you've already done in creating the portrait of a graduate and what your goals are to do within, within those buildings and the work that you've done to balance the enrollment as much as you can. So out of all of those points of contact and marrying all of those things together, these were the priorities that came out of all of those things put together and verified by staff and community. First and foremost is safety and security. We know that the world's a different place now. You have a safety and security program in place, which is working well, but needs to be updated and updated for now and in the future. So there's a component of work that applies directly to that. Wendy mentioned you have somewhat, something like $3.5 billion worth of assets in your community now, which are aging, as Wendy pointed out, and need to be updated and protected. And not only for now, but well into the future, and this plan provides for that. The modernized learning environments are to marry how you're teaching now and into the future with what exists in the school today. Steve talked about collaborative learning environments, new curriculum, you have more specialists. Those, those people need to be accommodated and need to be accommodated in an efficient way in order to make your schools work better today and into the future. And there's small pockets of, of opportunities to create equity across the district by repurposing Burkett and creating a, a similar high school experience at each of the three high schools that creates an equitable situation for the high schools, but also allows us to use Burkett in a different way, which plays into the fifth point, which is operational efficiency in, in offloading unused properties or housing things that, that are housed elsewhere across the district. So we have to put dollars to this so you understand what the magnitude of all of this work is. We've put the major stories, infrastructure, and that's the dollars that primarily go into protecting your investment into the future. Those are the things that you need to do to bring those buildings physically up to the standard that you need to have them today and to prepare them for, to duplicate their life that they've already given you. Modern learning is, is a little bit more encompassing than that, but it, it includes all of those things that I just talked about in creating equitable, equitable buildings, housing additional programs, housing the additional staff and people that you have within those spaces. Security is, is pretty understandable. It's making your school safe, secure, and making the people and children within feel safe and secure. And once you've made this investment, you need to maintain that as well. So the 10-year-plus assessment work allows for you to maintain this level of quality and in cross all of the buildings, which has the comprehensive work that Steve talked about, brings all the buildings to a, a safe standard, the same standard. And the 10-year category allows that to go forward. So the, the numbers come in at $350 million for infrastructure, and as I said, that's to maintain and protect your investment. The modern learning improvements, which is all of the things we talked about academically, food service, kindergarten renovation, maintain classrooms that Steve had mentioned earlier, library renovations, on and on, furniture upgrades is $470 million, and security by itself is $55 million, although all of the work that goes into these schools and projects is, is done with an eye towards the safety and security of the occupants within them. And to maintain that and to maintain the standard that we've created at this point requires, you know, a commitment of 10 to 15 million dollars a year after that.
So I just want to talk briefly about some of the steps we've already started to take to, to start operationalizing this plan as well as, again, the remaining steps we need to, to adopt it and then move forward. Again, to reiterate, the safety and security improvements have been our kind of number one priority, myself and John spoke a few months ago about, about our work plan for summer of 2024 and what we're targeting there. But just to kind of reiterate, we are moving forward with a enhanced security camera plan, which we believe by the end of this year will have a full exterior and interior security camera coverage at every one of our buildings. So that's a, that's a significant increase from the amount of coverage we currently have. We continue to work with our intercom systems within the buildings. We've made some significant improvements there over the last year or two, and I do feel a little excited. I feel like over the past couple of years in that intercom project, we've really been playing defense and trying to catch up, but we're really starting to, you know, turn, turn and kind of start playing offense and talk about really some proactive solutions, really exciting solutions, talking about integrating our intercom communication systems with other communication systems and things like that too, so that it becomes, you know, much more of a comprehensive communication solution than just the, just the traditional main office to, to room intercom. So continuing to move forward there. We did talk, again, in September about starting to do full door replacements. Again, we've talked a lot about the need to, to really fully address all infrastructure in the district over the next 10 years. Doors are part of that. Doors do have a useful life and, and are starting to come to the end of that, so we are beginning that door replacement project as well. In the area of safety and security, that does leave that, that sort of contemporary visitor management or, or entry sequence is sort of a, a big piece that, that realistically, just because of the amount of work involved, is still a year or two away. We believe some of these items we just talked about and other processes we put in do, do provide mitigating controls towards that, and we definitely continue to look to improve. So we are currently looking at other, other solutions that'll continue to, to either assist as we, as we work for, towards that visitor management sequence, also working towards how we can better segment the building, whether that is, you know, making sure that we have some locks or restricted access in that, that main entrance corridor. I will point out, one of the, one of the challenges, you know, we, safety and security becomes pretty comprehensive and covers a lot of different scenarios, right? And I think one of the challenges that, that we always want to make sure that in, in protecting or trying to solve against one potential safety and security issue, we're not unintentionally creating a hindrance in another scenario. So again, when you talk doorways, they, they do have a critical role of protecting us from, from intruders or unwanted guests, but also we want to make sure they're not hindering the response if we do have an emergency provider that needs to come in for a different type of emergency, or if we have a health emergency, you know, we, we don't want to impact the ability of a, a paramedic or a nurse to respond to a student or a staff's health emergency. So there's a few pieces we're still working through on that, but we, but I, we, we are definitely in a mode of continuous improvement when we talk about our safety and security. I do want to move on. We are starting to pilot some modern learning environment spaces. Both Matea Valley and Niqua Valley recently have pulled out some locker banks and have started to use that space in collaborative ways. Those are the spaces pictured, pictured here on the slide, and I think one of the things that's exciting is, is to see how the different schools have done it and also then how similar spaces are being used very differently even at the two campuses. And so as we continue to explore those, those spaces, and again, at this point, it's just one or two spaces in each building, really gives us an opportunity to see how some of the, the, the modern learning environments, how a lot of what, what Whiting Company has, has presented tonight will start to play out throughout the district. Similarly, we are starting to talk about piloting similar modern classrooms, modern spaces at our elementary and middle schools as well. We anticipate having a pilot elementary classroom up by spring break at one of our elementary schools. And the idea there would be to allow several teachers to kind of rotate through that space, spend a month or six weeks maybe teaching in that space, learning that space, and then send them back to their traditional classroom and really get the feedback of, okay, what, what, what are we missing now that we've experienced that classroom and we're, and we're back to more of the traditional, traditional model? You know, just again, want to, want to talk about a lot of the infrastructure work we've done. The infrastructure work kind of starts to go against those numbers. The works we've already done in summer of 2023 and what we have planned in 2024 will be against the, the amounts that, that Rick just showed. And then the technology infrastructure upgrades, there was a real need to get some of the technology modernized and replaced before we could do a lot of the, the classroom work we're talking about. So the work we did over the summer, replacing all Wi-Fi ports and expanding Wi-Fi coverage, that becomes a critical piece of ensuring that technology access throughout, throughout all the classrooms. So just as far as next steps as we work through this report, you know, today our goal was to really provide the board and our community a high-level summary of our, our work and some of the key pieces. They'll see it all the buildings. Next week, we will be making, making available the full comprehensive plans for each building. So that'll be a, I think we're going to come in over 1,000 pages total, so about 30-plus pages per building of detail.
We're getting that electronically, right?
Electronically print, print, copy available on request. But yeah, a really detailed document of both the assessment work, so where, where our assessment teams see our buildings today, then also what the detailed plans are going forward. So, so again, we will be making those available. There will be a public feedback window for that, that'll be available through, through the district website to, again, incorporate even further touchpoints and further community feedback to our plans. And then our, our goal is to come to the board at the December 18th meeting and really be able to present any changes or updates to, to tonight's presentation and then request adoption of the master facility plan.
Firstly, what's the plan, where the plan is going to be available first?
Sure. They'll, they'll be available electronically through the district's website. There will be a link going out as part of that weekly e-news email site and newsletter so, so that all our community members should, should receive notice and, and should receive an easy link to, to access all that. And then I guess the, the final piece tonight, you know, just kind of walked, we didn't talk a lot about timeline through the first part of this. You know, we do want to be realistic about timeline. You know, this is a, a plan with a goal of, of a 10-plus year implementation schedule. As, as Rick mentioned, there is work that will need to continue past the full implementation. And the timing will be determined based on, on our final funding plan as well. But, but I hope tonight you, you at least got a taste of what, what our future would look like or could look like under this master facility plan, as well as what our high priority items would be, or the items that the, the community can expect to see those first, you know, two, three, four years out. So that would be the safety and security upgrades across all campuses, and then that would really be the comprehensive improvements we talked about at Wabonzi, Hill, and Gregory. We are starting to look at, at funding this, and I just wanted to talk through a commitment to fund through a variety of sources and to really be multifaceted in, in how we fund this. So our first recommendation would be to look at current, current fund balance or current reserves and make a recommendation to, to draw down a portion of those funds, specifically the, the portion that's in excess of 25% of annual revenues. Second, I, you know, we, we are excited about seeing what operational savings come out of this plan as well. So the ability to fund some operating improvements and, and fund it through reduced energy needs, reduced maintenance costs. Looking at, again, a lot of the sustainability work, there is sustainability grants and energy efficiency programs that are available for additional funding. Programs like, like increasing the lighting, you know, going to, going to LED lighting throughout our buildings, again, not only creates operational savings, there's a lot of grants available for that work too. A lot of grants directly through comm ed or our energy providers or, or even the federal or state governments. We did talk about the ability to potentially offload a couple underutilized properties as part of this plan, and we also talked about ending our STEPS lease and serving those students at the Burkett Center. That would, again, create a, some one-time revenues as well as operating savings. I, I will mention, although we don't get significant capital funds, we do receive a small portion of, of annual capital funds too that would apply directly to this plan. Again, this plan is designed to be all-in, so there's no other capital needs outside of what's documented in this plan. And the, the final piece, and this is, is realistically probably the largest piece and the piece that, that could influence that timing most significantly, and that's the recapture of our current debt service levy. So as we've talked with the board for, for I think a year plus now, we are coming down to, to the point where we will have fully repaid all outstanding debt of the district, the final bonds being the bonds that built Matea Valley High School. That bond payment's about $25 million a year. So if we were able to recapture a portion or all of those, those funds, that would, we could apply that directly to this, this next project. So again, taking funds that were used to, to kind of build these buildings over that, that period shown earlier, that '85 to 2005 period, and just now that it's time to reinvest those buildings, use those funds to, to reinvest in those buildings. So that is something we, we would encourage the board and our community to explore, and we, again, that, that becomes one, the key funding piece for, for these projects. Overall, I just want to steal something from Rick, who I think the origin of this is, is from Desmond Tutu, but the quote is that how do you eat an elephant? You do eat it one bite at a time. And so, again, this is a, this is a comprehensive plan, but, and given the size of our district, it's going to be a lot of work, but we're excited to get started, and we've already started taking some bites at it. And so with that, myself and the rest of our team are available for any board comments or questions.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Dunning? You want to go? Questions? Oh, Victoria, would you like to ask? So Victoria's from our student, um, school board.
Hello. I don't have any questions, but as a student representative, I know two members of our student board were at the facility, facility planning's meeting, and I just want to say I really appreciate that you're implementing student voice into the restructuring of the renovations within buildings also, because we're a board that focuses more on policy changes. So we just appreciate that you're bringing that into and including it with the expertise. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Dunning?
Thank you for the presentation, and I am first, man, I just have to say, it's so exciting to get even closer to the retiring of our bonds. It's, it's, I've been here six years, it seems like a long time, and I know for Mark it's been even longer, but it's just great to, to be.
Excellent.
No, no, I, what I mean is it's, it's like you can touch it almost, so it's wonderful because we've been talking so much about maintenance of our buildings and what's happening with them, and to be able to see us be able to consider doing some things that will make a large difference. Matt, I, and anyone else? I remember my very first year here, President Donahue and I had a chance to look at an opportu- to, to see a variety of architectural construction companies and these new plans for buildings and classrooms, and like, wow. Can you just share a little bit, when you talk about modernization? I don't know whether all of, you know, the public really understands just little bit that you can give, what, if you can give a little bit of idea of what that means and what difference does that mean in a school learning setting?
Everyone wants to take this one.
We all want that.
Wasn't it meant to be a hard question?
Great question. It's not hard, it's, it's exciting for us.
So to start with, just thinking of the core classroom, regardless of what age level we're talking about, back in the day, and that day wasn't that long ago, in the eighties and even the nineties, that it was kind of a factory model setup, plug a kid into a chair and they're going to receive information and they're going to learn it and be able to recite it. And we know now, we're a little bit smarter, that students learn in a variety of different ways, and to appeal to those different modalities, the space has to support those different modalities. So some students are going to need a little bit more space to stand up, or, you know, perhaps a variety of different furniture, as well as just making, you know, the electronic displays more accessible for students. So that could be adjustments to the lighting, in addition to the technology that could support them. So that would be at the core, core classroom element part.
I mean, I would add the same could apply to the overall buildings. You know, my comment about, a lot of buildings are classrooms and hallways and very little of anything else. We see just more variety of teaching spaces beyond just your core classrooms and your hallways, but we see schools opening up with small group rooms, maker labs. Libraries are no longer a room behind a closed door, but they're really the heart of the school and they're more active. So I think providing the choice within the classroom, but providing more choice of spaces in the whole organization of the school, I think is part of what defines a modern school.
You know, I, I will say, from, from my perspective, some of it is you have to see it to, to believe it, right? And I think through, Wendy mentioned earlier, some of the focus group work we did, some of the tours we did, and there was one, I, I, I won't even say the level, because I don't want to pick on the person too much, who said, you know, before I started this process, I thought our classroom was pretty good. Now all I can see is kind of the shortcomings, right? I think when we took those tours, I think our high school folks, in some ways, they get out a little more, whether it's for extracurriculars, you know, athletics and things, so they kind of knew what they were missing. They came with very specific lists of, we want this that we saw at Stevenson and this that Naperville Central has, and well, how come Wobonzie can't look like Downer South, right? It was when we got into the middle and elementary school where you brought teachers in and you kind of almost the second the door opened, it, it was like, wow. Again, a lot of what, a lot of what Steve and Wendy talked about, about seeing a, a lot of the things we want to do in the classroom being, again, accelerated and complimented by the building as opposed to impeded by it. And so, so again, I think some of it I would, you know, I'd just say to, to, to community members, you know, if you have an opportunity, whether it's part of, you know, high school, you know, going, going to a vis- a visitor, you know, game where we're the visitors or something, just to get to see some of this in person, it's, it's really exciting. And, and again, we've, we do have neighboring communities and that, that have engaged in some of this work. So there are examples, you know, not too far from here.
I think one of the things that's so critical, certainly the learning environment has changed, but it's such preparation for our students, it's critical because as you look at what's happening in the corporate world, if you look at whether our students determine to go to higher education, whatever that higher education level may be, that's, it, it's happening everywhere. And so it's, it's critical to help prepare our students for that different thought process and learning, that different process and, and given, uh, given, give and take and just camaraderie with each other. So that was all I wanted to, to ask. Thank you so much.
Great question. I was going to ask, if the students want to leave, and, or you're welcome to leave, but of course, we would like you to listen to the rest of our discussion, but I just thought I would throw it out there, so. Yeah, if you need something signed, we can also sign it for you.
I, I got it.
Ms. Fostick.
All right. Thank you, this is so thorough, and there's so much information, and it is really exciting to see what the possibilities are. I will be excited to see how we're going to fund it. When I look at the total cost of $875 million, over that amount of time, that's al- almost three years of our entire budget, right, just for perspective. So that is a, is an interesting piece for me. That will be, you know, we have some suggestions here about how it will be paid for, but it's definitely a consideration. Something I really, that struck me when Steve was talking about solving the same problem in different buildings, when he was talking about the front entrances. You said, for instance, you know, to, to enhance that front entrance security, we're going to do what each building needs to meet that. And to, to me, that was, it was such like a hidden gem of, of an example of how equity is woven through this plan and supports our strategic plan and our equity plans, and is really the hallmark of our district. We're going to do what each building needs so that all of our kids have an inclusive, modern learning space. So that, that's really, really exciting to see. Thank you.
Mr. Rising.
So we talked about this October of 2022, was the first time we talked about this during Mr. Robinson's facility discussion, and we went out to RFP in December, and White has been working on this for the last eight, nine, 10 months. Thank you all for all the work you've done. If you could go to slide 38, this has already been mentioned a couple times now, regarding funding this, Ms. Fostick mentioned this. So obviously, there's a lot of different variety of sources that we could look at. Regarding the timeline of 10 to 20 years, depending on, and I know we're still going to get a lot of different things, we're going to have, still have more discussions, but I guess my, my question kind of centers around the options and the sources that we have available to us and the timeline. Depending on the options we look at, what this board feels, what administration feels, what our community and our parents feel, could that timeline be shortened? Could we be looking at maybe, if we look at all funding sources, could we be looking at a shorter timeframe versus lesser sources, we're looking at a longer timeframe? If, if you could just kind of speak to that, Matt, just, just briefly with kind of just having a global sources versus timeline thing?
Sure. The, the, again, the recapture that debt service levy at about $25 million a year, that's, that's the most critical piece of the, of the funding plan. If, if we get that, that full 25, or if we, we look to get that full 25 million, you know, that, that gets us kind of at that, that 10-plus level, so, so it would take probably more to, to, to shorten that timeline. With that said, the, a couple things to, to keep in mind, we could issue new debt, so it, and that would accelerate that timeline if instead of doing it, you know, if we, it wouldn't necessarily just have to be $25 million per year, we could borrow off of that, that money too, and that would be part of what, what accelerates that timeline as well. Again, the, the sort of more funds we have available to, to sort of match the projects, that starts really helping some of those other sources, whether it's matching grants, whether it's the, the, just recapture some cost savings, that, that really helps those, those pieces kind of fall in line too. I didn't mention explicitly, but when we talk about district fund balance and what we, what my recommendation would be, or what we could be comfortable contributing from fund balance, it would be in the range of probably 65 to 75 million at this time, that, that again, we're in excess of, of that 25%, so that's obviously a significant start too. So again, we're, 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 we're confident that we have a variety of sources to, to help address this. I will say, one of the, one of the things we want to, to highlight though, a lot of that, that implementation is infrastructure. It doesn't necessarily make sense to, to accelerate infrastructure for two reasons. We obviously don't want to replace something while there's still some useful life yet, left, although sometimes that can be challenging. You'd think that there's a, there's a component of the, the water system at Niqua that has a little more useful life than apparently it did today. But, but yeah, you don't want to just, you know, replace a roof just for the sake of replacing a roof, you do want to make sure you, you take that down to, to its useful life. You know, the second piece is this sort of buildup of costs. We also don't want to put our, although you'll still be on the board, Mark, but we don't want to put the rest of the, our successors in this position 20 years from now where, you know, we, we have another set of needs that are very condensed. So, so part of the goal of the plan would be to, 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 even if there's an acceleration on the front end of the plan, start making it a more of a consistent annual ask going forward. So, yeah, we, we, as the board knows, we, we would, we, we do have, we have started looking at, looking at some of the funding solutions, and, and that'll be part of the, the discussion when we start looking at, at our budget and forecasting presentations, you know, really in January or February.
Thanks, Matt. Yeah, I don't employ you, I just employ the superintendent, so thank you for that comment there. The, you know, when we were looking at the individual things, kind of that were commonalities at the elementary school, the middle school, the, the high school, and it was talked about the vestibules, I believe Mr. Drake brought that up in his comment. I know I've had discussions with you, Matt, with JR, with Ron, our safety and security. I, I think I heard you saying there, Matt, that we've already begun some of that, you know, specifically regarding the vestibules, and, and did I hear you say that that could be a one to three-year process of kind of, and I'm assuming you're going to look at the vestibules right now, that kind of are, need a little more work, and then kind of work our way through the ones?
Yeah, the, the safety and security, that the actual front entrance vestibules, what we have envisioned as part of this plan, would impact every school in some way. That would be a, a high or highest priority for us, but, but again, that's not necessarily work that we've started today. I think we found solutions that, that maybe mitigate some of that risk. Uh, you know, a lot of that's operational, so what I would say is we know we have a, maybe a shortcoming in our physical security protocols right now, but we've, we've mitigated that somewhat with our procedures, with our training, with, with staffing. So, so we feel like we've, we've started to, started to address it, that the piece that we're looking at, again, that I mentioned earlier, security cameras, so increasing exterior camera coverage plays a role in that. And then, again, we, as we've, as we've got our, some of our technology and, and other infrastructure in the building in place, we do have the opportunity to start electronically striking doors, so that instead of having to use a handheld key, you can use a, use a badge. That does, does a couple things, it, it does improve the, the security protocols because you can deactivate a badge, whereas if a key goes missing, you, you don't know where that key went. Also, in the event of an emergency, it's a gross motor skill as opposed to a fine motor skill, for, again, for somebody, for a district employee to have to potentially respond to something on the other side of the door. So we do think that, that's something we can start looking towards, you know, striking a, a greater number of those interior doors to provide that segmentation, and, and again, provide another mitigating control to maybe that front entrance. We're just still working through some of the, the discussions. And again, what we don't want to do is create an unintended consequence because we think we are protecting against one vulnerability or one risk and then find out that, you know, we, we created a, a safety and security, a, a new safety and security risk for potentially another, another type of event.
And then just two quick comments, if you go to slide 34. I just wanted to, I know you mentioned this twice within the presentation, but number four and five, I, I just don't want our community to be surprised in any way, shape, form or fashion, but eventually down the road, and there is no timeline for this, but I just wanted to call attention to that at some point, you know, we will be looking at, you know, repurposing Burkett, and then that, and there may be the sunsetting of Wheatland and, and Indian Plains and ending the Lily Sid steps. So I just wanted to reiterate that again, so the community wasn't surprised that those are things we're looking at, again, with no clear timeline set right now. Obviously, we'll let the community know well in advance of that happening. And then, just one last comment, you know, I know buildings and facilities necessarily to most people is not the sexiest topic to talk about, but I'm glad at the beginning, when you started talking about it, you discussed how, you know, our, our buildings, interior, exteriorly, classrooms, it can enhance or prohibit how teachers teach and how students learn. And what we have seen in multiple studies, and Whiting Company has seen this, and I've seen this by visiting other schools, is that it does make a difference. It does make a difference for these students and the teachers of how they learn, whether it's the building itself or the classroom or the learning spaces. So thank you for doing all the work on this.
All right, Ms. Gents. Well, I do want to start by thanking all of you for all the time you put into this, and honestly, it is really exciting to see, understanding it is going to be, you know, over a time period, just what is going to be improving. And I loved what you said about the whole student, that, that all of this was in mind for the whole student. So with that in mind, I only had one question. What, I know safety and security will be the priority, as it should be, and, but is that also including getting more safe spaces, special spaces at every school for, whether it's a self-contained classroom or it's, it's just an isolation room, calming room, I should say, that sounds much better?
I've talked enough.
I didn't mean, I didn't mean to stump you guys, I thought.
I'm not, I'm not used to having three other people here and having to share, uh, share the microphone. Uh, I, I think explicitly we were talking safety and security, I think we were talking about some of the, the, the secure vestibules being the priority, but definitely that, that, that safe place vibe, that, that again, was, was mentioned and that Wendy reiterated, is it's, it's not just about, you know, it's not just about that piece, it is about those, those calming spaces, it is about having those additional places throughout, throughout the building. So those will be a key part of that modernized learning environment phase, which, which again, will be probably tackled a little earlier at some of those comprehensive updates and then, then kind of ruled out throughout the rest of the district.
Okay. No, honestly, thank you very much. And Ms. Fostick and Mr. Rising did a great job addressing funding with you guys, so I will not ask again about that, but. But, again, just thank you so much, and I think we're all really excited to see this rollout.
So Ms. Jane.
So since my time on the board, I've learned really quickly how we, this board has historically nickled and dimed everything because of our budget constraints. They've been so mindful about how we spend, and our administrators have been so mindful. To be able to see a report like this, it's almost like, wow, right? Like, it's giving us some creative space that I haven't felt yet, and I've only, this is, I'm in my third year, but still, it's very exciting, at the same time, a little bit nerving, right? Because I've now been accustomed to our culture and to think about renovations with this dollar amount, I will admit, is, it is, it strikes you differently. However, I think it's important to contextualize, as Matt did very nicely, that historically we have not been funding these needs the way they have needed to be funded. And so now we are at a point where we've spent 50 million and committed 50 million to a lot of improvements, and we are now taking it forward, that if I could say, and please tell me if I'm correct, what we see on slide 36 is a summary of our needs. These are not luxuries, these are needs that our students have right now that we are short of. Would that be an accurate statement?
That is correct. Needs and priorities.
Yeah. Okay. Because I think that's really important for us, board members, as well as the community to understand. Now, a 10-to-20-year plan also feels a little unnerving, I think that's what many of the board members are talking about. Do these plans change? Like, how does it work? You know, in year five, do we discover something, do we modify and adapt? Like, how would that?
Of course. There'll be things that change, goals that change, priorities that change, but it's always done in the context of the needs that have been identified and addressed, and how those needs and wants change as you go through time. A master plan is typically a living, breathing document, but it gives you a context to make decisions within that make it a little bit easier. And when an objective changes, there's a domino effect in some things that have to happen to make that a reality.
And process-wise, because we have, when was the last time we did a master?
2014.
2014.
Yeah, I remember it well.
So it has been some time. So let's say, I just want to play this out, if this plan is approved, do you come, do you come back to the board in parts for sub approvals of the plan? Or is it one?
Yeah.
One and done?
No, good question. So we would, similar to the strategic plan, we are asking the board to adopt this as kind of our North Star or our guiding light as we, you know, go, just begin a facility program. The individual projects will still continue to regularly update the board. Obviously, there are legal requirements on approving, you know, bids and contracts and things like that. So each of these projects will be, you know, each of these projects, as they come due, will be, will subject to, you know, additional approvals, just from a legal side. But, yeah, I would think of it similar to our strategic plan, where we've adopted a five-year plan, and now we are reporting out to not just our board, but our community on the progress towards that plan. I think the year-one update goes out next week, and it would be a similar target with our facility plan, too, is that we would have a 10-year plan, and we would report on our progress towards it. Again, I think that the nice thing about this plan, and we emphasized our kind of excitement to start even just a few pilots this spring, so that we can start getting that sort of feedback going. And, again, there's room, you know, this, you know, that's why, part of why we didn't want to present tonight, you know, in 2026, we'll paint the walls, you know, blue instead of white, because that's not the intention. The intention is really to kind of cost it out, provide large blocks of ideas and concepts and funding, and then say, as we move forward on the individual plans, we will further refine, refine these ideas.
And through the process, and this is my last question, through the process, you will be working with third parties to oversee, like, would this be, because this seems like a whole, you need a huge team for, to implement this, like, could you just speak to that?
Sure. You know, when you talk about significant construction work, you are talking about a team. We, you know, we're fortunate, we have a few great members of our district building operations team, although, again, it's in single digits with John and his team, Ken and Rich, Ken Swallow and Rich Searle are his two, I guess, deputy directors of building operations who handle a lot of the capital projects management. So we will be, with this, we will require additional support. Generally speaking, a project structured where you have an architect, you have a construction manager, you can bring in other advocates for the district, an owner's rep or other sort of district consultants to kind of manage that process. So there will be a full team behind us and a full team involved in this process, for sure.
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. It is very comprehensive what you looked at. Could you go to slide eight? So I just want to understand, this current square footage per student versus projected square footage per student is taking into account demographic changes? Okay. And you basically took the footprint of the building, the floors or whatever, and said, just if I had it completely empty, this is how many square feet it is, and then divide it by the number of students that are in there? Okay. So with some of the projected changes that you're talking about, like, young would get an addition to it, this doesn't show what that might do, or it does?
It does not. This was our early look, just to look at all of the buildings in the district across the board.
Okay. So is it possible, then, that just by, well, we won't gain any, were you constrained about not, not creating a bunch of construction project, or was that an open?
This was just trying to understand the district and all of the buildings in their current state as part of the analysis, just one of the pieces of how we're analyzing the buildings. We did not assume any, you know, construction as part of it.
Okay. So my impression is that the self-contained classrooms moved to different buildings in different years. Would this, is this facilities plan assuming they would be more permanent in certain buildings then, or?
So we did move, for example, we moved some programs out of Springbrook to Biltah this year, but the movement was based upon the need of the program. It's not something that's done in a sort of haphazard way, and I'm not saying you were saying that. It is looking at very thoughtful and planful ways. I will also say that special education did have a conversation with White and company about where they're going down the road, if any additional changes would be happening. So they were, are aware as much as possible of any possible changes that may happen.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I did notice, I've been in Biltah recently, and I noticed the program there, whatever, and really, I do see a tremendous need to have more specialized spaces for those students, and I just figure if you're going to put it in a certain building and create those special spaces, then we would keep it there, but, yeah. So, in this plan, Burkett would be repurposed as the location for steps and for our Gail McKenzie also?
That's correct, yes.
So is there a plan for that building, too?
There is, and as mentioned, that'll be, that'll be part of the package included next week. I will say it is a fairly comprehensive look at Burkett. We do not want our steps program to have left Burkett five years ago and come back to the same building. That's not the intention. The intention is for Burkett to look a lot more like the current facility they have on Schuman Avenue than it did five years ago, or, you know, when they left a year or two ago. So we do have some pretty extensive renovations planned. Also, we want to make sure that each of those programs, and to the extent there's maybe some other uses for that building as well, all have separate entrances, separate secure entrances, that we're not having the unnecessary co-mingling of students, that it really is their own space, that that, you know, school community can really grow in together, can be branded as that school community's space. So we're really excited about the possibility to reimagine Burkett. And then, from a funding standpoint, I will, I will mention some of these changes to Niqua and Burkett, when we start looking at the operational savings that this could drive, whether that's retiring the steps lease, whether that is some additional administrative overhead associated with Burkett, even some transportation savings, just given that we're running a couple of different sets of bus routes for Niqua students now. A lot of those changes really, really do start kind of paying for themselves as well. And we also do, with the steps, that would be an opportunity to look at some special education grant funding to pay for those changes as well.
And so if you move to slide 10, the combination of moving the freshmen back into the Niqua building, both of these are not hitting kind of the target for square footage per student. And I know Niqua is going to have some proposed additions to it, so is this chart going to look better when that gets combined, or is it going to be about the same, or could it be worse?
I'd say it depends on the additions that we're going to add. It could be better, or it could be worse, depending upon the additions.
Matt's whispering.
Well, we would add that, you know, this metric isn't a one-all, tell-all. Example being, you know, Matia Valley's one year, newest schools, but it appears far below that sort of threshold number, and that's because of the efficiency of the building. Matia's a very efficient building with the repetition of hallways, and so you don't necessarily feel that when you're in the building, whereas Wabansy is actually over that square footage, but you don't necessarily feel that when you're in that building because of all the circulation and hallways, because of how the additions been added on. Niqua, I think, in terms of its layout, it is more efficient than a Wabansy Valley, so it's got some efficiencies working for it, which I think will help that figure with the additions that we plan in it, too.
Yeah, because, I mean, Burkett is almost a quarter of the students coming into that building, so it's like, I got worried when I saw this, and then I went to the plan for Niqua to see, you know, is there significant adds to kind of help, but I'll wait to see the details or whatever, but it was a concern. I did also, oh, go ahead.
Let me just, I don't want to create an issue where people at Niqua are thinking it's going to be bad if we bring Burkett over. So I want to, I want to answer that question now. The plans for Niqua are to provide some additional office space, which will clear up some student space in that building. And so from the plans that were shown, and they were shown to the principals of those schools, they liked what the additions would be and would take care of Burkett coming over. So I just want to make sure, before the meeting ends and we leave, I don't want people to think that we're going to create a problem by making this happen. So I just want to put that on the table.
Can I also give you something to equate it with? So eight years ago, when Niqua's population with Burkett and the main campus was 1,000 students more. So in other words, the freshmen's, or the main campus right now had half of those, they had the same amount of students that they'll have once you move Burkett into the main campus. Does that make sense? So Niqua can easily handle the freshman campus moving to the main campus, because they had that eight years ago.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the benchmark of square footage per student and how many students are in that building. So I do want it to be a good picture, so I was hoping that would come out. I probably should have phrased my question in a different way, but my expectation is that if we combine the two, that we're not creating a situation that is bad. I also like the fact, and I believe this is correct, that in our elementary schools, that our kindergartens will all be moving towards having bathrooms connected to the rooms, or is that only for some of them?
It's currently in the plan, yeah.
In the plan, okay. So that's, I think that's a good addition, too, and something when we were only half day kindergarten, maybe wasn't as needed, but with full days, I think it's important. So I think that we're on a path here, we've approved our strategic plan, and this board has gone through a lot with all the things over the past year. We've approved a strategic plan, an equity plan, we have approved the portrait of a graduate, so we know what our students, we want them to look like when we come out of here. And this is the next phase of what are we doing with our facilities, and how do we take that to the future? When we approve this, if we approve it at the December meeting, we are not approving the funding on this, we're approving this as a plan for our district to move towards in the future. And decisions on our construction, our operational and facilities budget will be like every year, well, you come to us with a grocery list, this is what our proposed budget is, this is our plan, like, we're going to upgrade the Wabansy tennis courts this year, or we're going to change the Niqua front entrance. So it's like, you'll have a grocery list that aligns, if we approve this plan, with what we have said in this plan for our priorities. So just to be clear. Any other questions, or? All right, well, thank you very much, it's a lot of work.